It's the parking up there that's just... I found a fellow from Butler. He kinda played my dad while he was up there. So just make friends with whoever. I was like, "Help." Fish out of water when I get up there.
Do you have anything else to say?
Yep. I do.
Tell you what, after bills, let's go ahead and put it in public comments.
If we can get them in before 10.
Yup. Wanna try to do that and move on. Everybody will have five minutes to speak. And I'll check that time and then we need to move on.
The library dropped off these annual reports. We just get a copy of it. It's just a courtesy copy that they give us. And they provide each one of you with one.
Thank you.
Jimmy tried squeezing me out, didn't he?
Not me. I didn't catch it. I brought my jacket.
I wonder why it's turning red. That's what I'm getting also.
Not to say, huh?
No. I'm ready whenever you guys are.
Okay. We'll go ahead and agenda is stand approved. There's a little change in scheduling there. With that being said, we're gonna open up the meeting. And Kelly?
Let me switch to my cameras. Henry County Commission, Henry County, Missouri, Thursday, April 24th, 2025, eighth day of the April term. The Henry County Commission met pursuant to adjournment at the courthouse in Clayton, Missouri. Those members present were Jim Stone, Presiding Commissioner, Mark Larson, North District Commissioner Jake Bradley, South District Commissioner Kelly Merritt, Henry County Clerk. At 11:30 AM, Commissioner Stone brought the meeting to order. The agenda was approved as presented. Amendments from the Tuesday, April 22nd, 2025, we were read. Commissioner Bradley made a motion to approve the minutes. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Motion carried. Expenditures for the following are approved to be paid. Road and Bridge, Circuit Clerk, Law Enforcement GR, Assessor, Road and Bridge, Special Election, County Clerk, Jury Kate. Dennis Bowers shared that Northwest 951 Road in between 700 Road and Anheuser Road in Honey Creek Township is still closed due to storm damage. He also shared that he had submitted the soft match request but hasn't heard anything back on it. He also shared equipment at the Road and Bridge Department that would be put on Purple Wave. Commissioners Dennis and Dennis had discussion on the road maintainer demonstration held by Windsor Special Road District. Dennis stated that if the commission was interested in purchasing a maintainer, he would want one that could be pulled by a truck, not just a tractor unless he keeps the tractor that they are going to sell on Purple Wave. Commissioner Bradley stated he wanted to see how the townships feel about the maintainer. Emergency Management Director Mark Harden shared the DNR test results. He shared that the independent testing the county had done was also back. He said the layman's version would be back by next Friday. Commissioner Bradley asked Mark about the SEMA procedures after storm damage. Mark shared that as a whole, the county needs to reach $125,000 in estimated storm damage-related costs to qualify for financial reimbursement. Storm damage reports can be made by visiting www.henrycomo.com. Mark explained that any damage related to the storm can be claimed, even personal home floodings, tree damage. That is not just for the county and road districts. Dennis shared he got a call about Northwest 1501 Road in Boberg Township. Dennis shared it was a bridge that they had just done. The citizen had damaged their car in the approach. He doesn't know whether the insurance covered or not. Charlie Kidwiler, citizen of Davis Township, does intend to discuss a sunshine request made to Davis Township. He shared that he attended the board meeting last night and requested to look at their books. He isn't asking for copies. No one wants to look at the books. He asked him for books from 1971 to present. He shared that they will not let him see the books. Charlie continued to express his disdain with Ted Holt. Davis Township Board Member Mark shared that Charlie has the right to approach this situation legally if he chooses. At 12:11 PM, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to go into closed session via RSM 0610211 to discuss legal matters. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Motion carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Stone, yes. Commissioner Larson made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Bradley seconded the motion. Motion carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Stone, yes. Commissioners returned a call to Rebecca Cardwell regarding permission to use the lawn. A message was left. At 12:34 PM, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to go into closed session via RSM 0610211 to discuss legal matters. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Motion carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Stone, yes. At 12:53 AM, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to end closed session meeting. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Motion carried with a roll call vote. Larson, yes. Bradley, yes. Stone, yes. At 12:53 AM, Commissioner Bradley made a motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Larson seconded the motion. Carry with a roll call vote. Bradley, yes. Larson, yes. Stone, yes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
If you could look at your closed minutes, please.
Let me stand up.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to accept the closed minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried.
So you wanna do bills first?
Yeah.
Got a kit.
What?
Gray dress, .05, and nickel.
Is what it is. It was mandatory withholding and it was only on the one person, so.
Did you get the prayer?
Not yet. Be here this week sometime.
Mm-hmm.
OCB LLC is that sheriff app that the sheriff had come in and talked to us about. And he had figured out how to budget it. And Rick and I actually were talking about it. We went through that. I think we had $173,000 in that local tribal fund that we can use for... So instead of taking that out of the sheriff's budget, we took it out of there for a general revenue line item so that the sheriff didn't have to pull that out of his own budget. He was quite pleased. We pulled that out of there. It's a better mix for the entire community. Waggoner turn, Waggoner special turn in their map at the meeting. It's in the folder by itself.
Yeah, I pulled it out just a minute ago.
And then she mailed me the other part. Was you looking for one that wasn't in there?
Yeah. I've already got Dennis's.
Probably confusing.
Did you get yours?
Dennis didn't. I don't have one.
This didn't sign here.
This, Dennis didn't sign.
But when he gone vacation.
We'll just make sure he signs it when he comes in.
Yup. Can you get all the rest of them?
Yeah, I got all the ones. I was supposed to. Who signed it? Mark Harden. Is that you?
That's the one I was looking for. I didn't think I had it yet.
Is that one set in there?
Yeah, it's on seven.
Mark Harden?
Yeah. Okay. All ready? Can you get done with yours? Okay. Who do we have? Here by them that want to speak. Got a ride down?
Chuck. Chuck's on there first.
Okay, Chuck. Ready.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Lady, congratulations.
Thank you.
That was good. Thank you, gentlemen, for your service for this, doing this. But let me be perfectly clear. I'm not here to talk to anybody. I'm not here to really belittle anybody or nothing. I'm here to motivate because I watch this. And so thank you for this. My disabilities are such I can't be here all the time. And I know a lot of other people watch this and this is a great tool for us that can't be here. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. But I'm here to motivate them to come down here and to talk and voice their concerns on this issue. I know it's already done supposedly. I can't change that. I'm not here to change your mind. I'm not here to do anything except get them to come down and tell them their concerns. Because this issue has been done in the 90s and in 2000. And it failed miserly every time. And that is this homelessness and the deed that was given supposedly, I guess, to an organization that nobody really knows. I watched the interview, which to me was a job interview of a person in concern. And that person, all he did was, it was a job interview. In my thinking, my military training. And I apologize if I talk loud. I'm deaf is dumb, you know? So, but I also watch these and I know this is hard to hear. So I'm gonna speak loud because I'm deaf. And so this can be heard. Okay? I'm not trying to insult anybody. I don't want to insult anybody. I want the other people that live in this area that's going to be greatly affected to share their concerns with you. Not to be mean, not to be anything, but show their concerns. They've lived here. They know this issue. With that being said, my name's Chuck Thomas. I live just north of here. I don't live here in town. I have no catfight in this issue. I really don't. But I've been here when this issue was done and tried many times. And this one is doomed to fail too. Why? It's the old adage. You can't do the same thing over and over with a different expectation. That is the definition of insanity. The very definition of insanity. Secondly, if a criminal goes out and he keeps doing the same thing expecting a different expectation of a result, that is definition of insanity. And that criminal will always be arrested. Always be arrested. So my question is this. Why should I trade three branches of service that are overreaching and overbearing 3,000 miles away or 2,800 miles away for three that should know better here locally? There is to me no difference whether it's here, whether it's in Washington. If you're overreaching as a bureaucracy, and now I'm gonna say that word because that's all it is. It's not somebody appointed, but here we get the privilege of voting. And that's a wonderful gift that God gave us. So, with the topics in my concern, is one of them being this homelessness issue has been tried many times. It never has worked here. Why? Because if, they're gonna wind up here on this square. Very square that these businesses need. They need customers and the customers don't wanna be harassed. It's already happened. I don't know if the local police department has already been responding to them or if... I haven't seen them in the paper. I read the paper, the local paper. I have not seen where they have, but I know people that have called the police. So, and I'm putting this out there so that the people behind me that are going to listen to this will come in and voice their opinion. I don't know if the police department locally has been told, "Do not respond." I don't know. I don't know if the county has been told not to respond. But it seems that that's always the thing. It's either they respond or they've been told not to. LA has tried this and we know what kind of disaster that is. It is the most horrible thing any big city. Now, I was here back in the day in the 90s. My son worked local here as a law enforcement officer. And he had to endure it in 2000. Same issue. Very same issue. The issue is the same. It harms those that are innocent. Not because these people of the homeless nature are mean and they don't want to hurt people. But let's face it, they've been asked many times, "Don't be homeless." They've been through all kinds of things, but they refuse to stop being homeless. You cannot stop insanity. Whoever's behavior, you can't stop it. If they don't wanna stop it, they're not gonna stop it. And I understand the heart and I understand empathy. I understand what the Bible says. I understand what we're supposed to do. But the same thing is in the Bible. It talks about other issues that you can't, and I'm paraphrasing. You can't fix stupid. And I love these people. They need to have charity, but not in the middle of town. Because others that are innocent, that have been stripped away of their rights of protection, will be taken away. And I feel sorry because it's going on. I've already talked to people that live here, work here on this square. Restaurants and other areas around this. And they are already being affected from women being, going home in their cars and being harassed. Watching stupidity out on the ground. Now, I'm not going to blame the police department because I don't know what's been told. I don't know what they're doing or not doing. I hope that they're going to do something. But there should be rules in place. If we're gonna have this, then it needs to be moved. It needs to be moved. I'm going to say that. I know, I'm gonna be lamb blasted because people are gonna perceive me as heartless, and you know what? You don't know me. Nobody knows me here or there. Few here know me, and they know I'm not heartless. I may be an SOB, but I'm an SOB because I care. And I care enough about these people, even though I don't live here. I care about them. I want them to be motivated. There's many a time that there's been people that told them, we're gonna do this, and they had no voice. I want them, these people that are gonna watch this, I want them to rise up and I want them to come and talk to you reasonably, logically. I want them to beg you, please don't let this happen. Okay? Secondly, all these things are revolved around, we have politicians that have forgotten that they're servants. The servant is not supposed to be making pet peeve calls. And I understand, if you have a pet peeve and you have a project, I get it. It's your heart. It's your compassion. It's your identity. But please show me a report where someone here, three or whatever, that has lived and lived here in town and on this square, where you went and talked to the people that's gonna be affected by this. I would love to be able to see that report. Now, my guess is there are no such thing. There's not gonna be a report to where people went and talked to the people and the business owners here in town about this very issue. If there is, I stand corrected. I wanna be proven wrong that this is going to work. Nextly, we had to, the, the amount of fraud and waste of the money, I know the same thing is gonna happen here. The only people that benefit are those that are cut with the organization.
Do you need your stuff? Good luck, Mark.
Good luck. Chuck, we need to wind up. Maybe you can come back another time, then show.
I'm sorry, I, I can't hear.
Need to wind up, let's go ahead, because Mark's gotta leave, and if could, because we've had over five minutes now. But anyway, I think what you're doing is very good. I'm all in for it. We need to analyze it. I'll be the first to say, the homeless, I, I'm with you on a lot of that. I just don't know the answer to it. And a lot of it, I think you're just playing a big part. I really do. So anyway, by the way, one of the things on the camera is our, being streamed now.
I'm wearing the testing face.
We're testing right now with cameras, and everything will be a live stream in it, and you'll go to Henry County website, and it'll be on there and be saved there. And it'll be, it'll be a lot better. Yes, the monitor, you'll be able to watch it.
I'm sorry, I'm having to do.
You'll be able to watch it. I know, I'm hearing, I got him too. Anyway, but that's, that's what we've got right now, okay?
So there's going to be a study further before?
Well, I don't know what else is gonna take place. That's not out of our realm, you might say. I think some of that gets in courts and some of it is in public and our city, municipality. I don't know where all that is, and I guess part of that is we don't, don't have any say-so in some of that. We did on the, on the jail, but there, it's just, it's gonna have to be tore down. That's the worst thing here.
And, and that's, I'm concerned about that because that's what we were told back in the nineties, that it was gonna have to be tore down. And if that's the case, why, why give that much of a property here on the square to something that's dangerous? I mean, that could be used for a lot of things with the county, like the equipment, parking lot.
Anyway, we appreciate it today, appreciate you. Thank you.
See, I have visited with the Henry County, our sheriff, and they gotta be careful. They don't wanna step on the city cop's toes, but they are trying to work together to keep an eye on, around, for the business owners as well. I have talked to him about with that. Because I've, I've heard from people that's also concerned about the exact same issues you just brought up.
And I come here, I eat here. We come up here, there's a lot of good places here on this square to eat. And I don't wanna be harassed. I don't, I don't want my loved ones harassed. I don't want my grandkids harassed.
Agreed.
Okay.
Agreed.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good day.
Did y'all want to speak?
Yeah, I'll be in here for a second. No, we're up here.
Come on up here, I might be able to hear better.
My name's Gary Mal.
Yes, Gary.
Born, raised, and taught. I retired from the city in twenty sixteen, after thirty-five years. Of thirty-five years, thirty of those years I was on the emergency management team for the city. Worked with the county. John Dover and I took the old jail down here and turned it into the emergency management center. It worked great. We stocked it with everything we needed, all the equipment, we got grants, we had donations. I would like to know, I've heard rumors that this equipment is gone. I'd like to know, where is it? Where'd it go? It was all donated, we got money from the Skidmore Foundation to purchase the equipment. It's very nice equipment that we have, and that's where we did all of our meetings for emergency management and everything. I know that building probably better than anybody. And let me tell you, it's a dump.
I know that.
It is unsafe. You're gonna spend thousands of dollars trying to rebuild or remodel that building. I think it's a waste of money. If you got donations from organizations to do it, that's one thing. And yes, I've dealt with this homeless thing here in town for quite a while. You wanna get rid of them, give them a job application. No, these people stopped and giving them food and blankets and stuff like that. No, they need to go to work. Not just stand on a street corner. I've never seen them harassing anybody, but they're in front of buildings, you know? And that's, that's really not what I came here for. It just leads into this building down here.
Right.
That I'm more concerned about, where did the equipment go?
What equipment was it? I'm not entirely sure.
TV monitors, computers, cameras.
The?
Thousands of dollars worth of equipment.
The monitors and all that?
And I'm, I'm not asking for, for an answer to that.
Yeah, anyway.
I just, I would like to know.
All right.
Since I, I put in hundreds of hours working on that project, as well as the emergency management trailer that we built. I don't know, you've seen that or anything?
I've seen the trailer. I haven't looked in it, but I've seen.
Used it for several emergencies, and it, it worked great. Because I did a lot of the work on it, we literally gutted it and started over.
Okay.
So, I'd like to know that that's being kept in operation? If not, you know, where did it go? Keep looking at me.
Well, I mean, are we still using the trailer? Is it still?
It's still over at the bridge park.
Available to use, though?
Yeah, it's still operational.
Still operational.
We needed it. It's still here.
Good.
The equipment.
Good, it's.
As well as our, our generator.
The generator?
Getting moved to the courthouse.
That is the one we're moving?
No, 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 no.
Nope?
Well, no. The big generator is still in the garage. It's in the garage.
And we used to go to the medicine center.
It's in the garage.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that I know, and.
Still in the tank?
Yeah, and the others, they're all been. Big thing is, one of the things there, yeah, we just started it, and they're gonna start starting it. Mark is working on that, starting it every month, because it should be running.
Okay, it needs to be put under load?
Yep.
And that means?
There's a load test or something that they do.
Yeah. You take it out the medicine center, plug it in, cut the power and let it run. That's the only way you're gonna keep that thing, you know, maintenance. Appreciate it. Am I shroom? Or if you wanna use it?
Yes, it is, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Thank you for coming. Okay.
I have some things.
And we have?
The lady that we tried to call back the other day, Rebecca, that wanted to use the lawn.
Yes.
She's not really wanting to use the lawn. I, I called her, I tried to call her again downstairs because I didn't know if it was like a hurry up, we need this lawn this weekend thing, so I tried to call her. She called me back the next day, and she said during June cruise night, it's the Clinton Animal Shelter night. And they're gonna bring a couple dogs up here that are up for adoption, and they didn't wanna put them on the pavement that might be hot, and the cars coming in and out, so they just wanted to make sure it was okay if they had the dogs on the lawn.
Oh, yeah.
So that, that's all she wanted. It wasn't actually like for a function or something. She just wanted to make sure that it was okay with you guys before, so I will call her back and tell her, that's kind of like that. I thought it was fine, so.
Thank you for emailing back, Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
I figured we could talk about it, then I was gonna reach out to him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kevin's a good dude.
Real nice guy, yes.
Super nice.
Super.
In that regard, to Kevin's email, I also have a, another message from Ms. Mary Kay Newman about the same thing. She would like a call from the commissioners. And we are getting several phones. We are getting several phones.
I actually got a little bit on that senior bill. I think we need to schedule an appointment and meet with the administrators of the schools and talk to them. That would, since this can affect them.
If they're gonna run a, are they gonna wanna run election? Is that what the deal is? Is it gonna be?
No, 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 no. Jake's just saying the taxing entities that this is going to affect, he would like to have a, a meeting, a sit-down with them. This is what we're going to do. This is going to affect you. How do you feel about that?
It depends on how much we do, how much, if we only do the county and the health center.
I think we've gotta do them all.
I think.
I think we've gotta do them all.
We gotta do them all, then it's gonna affect, it's gonna even the townships.
That's why Jake's wanting to.
I, I don't know the proper way, because you've got all the townships it's gonna affect too.
Well, you've got sixty-three different entities.
Well, I talked to somebody down in.
You're gonna have to pull the trigger.
From the Benton County area, and that's what they said that they did. They met up with all the schools to talk to them, to let them know, hey, this is where we're at, this is where we're heading. We know it's gonna affect you. What's your opinion? You know, I think just to be upfront with them and talking to them would make a world of difference.
We have to, and like I said, the difference in Benton and Enner?
Yes, yeah, township.
Form of county, we look how many townships and specials you got.
Right, they still have other taxing entities.
The people in Benton County, for the schools, they got a hold of them, they talked to them.
Yep.
They didn't necessarily like it, but I mean, they also know that we're being pressed as well, so there was more understanding about it, where to be able to talk, talk it over.
Well, that, and it's not, we're doing this, this is the way it's gonna be. You've actually talked to them about it prior to saying, this is what we're gonna do, we just want you aware.
Because I feel if we only do.
Open communication.
A few of the entities. Let's make it worth it if we're gonna do it. Because I.
Didn't work suggestion not go anywhere?
With the vote?
Let them vote it in.
Well, we hadn't really actually gotten to talk about.
Nah.
Putting it under a vote.
Well, that's.
Mr. Sullivan had a great, a great point. If we put it underneath the vote, that's a good chance it won't go through. And then our seniors are really gonna suffer.
Yep.
Well, I question that.
I'm sorry?
I question that. The amount of re, uh, amount involved in the freeze is gonna be highly individual. People like me, it's not gonna make any difference.
Right.
Whatsoever.
Well, and by the time you take it to a vote of a.
Sent a bill one night.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're talking about.
The senior charities.
You know about that, and nobody, the big thing is, it's unclear on how, how much you can do. Just like us, the commissioners are over the health center and the county taxes.
I don't think it's unclear. It's clear that you can do them all, but the problem is, what you're concerned about is, is that somebody may take umbrage with that and wanna sue.
Well, it's unclear on down the road, and that's, I mean, that may be, that's chances all these other ones that have already voted it in are taking as well. So, but Benton, Benton County talked it over with the schools where they were more on board. That's the only thing I'm suggesting.
I think it'd be a great idea. I know, it'd just be the schools, you have townships too.
Yeah, I mean.
Although it's a drop in the bucket, though, compared to what the schools are going to miss out on a township. It doesn't, taxing entities are taxing entities, whether they're townships or.
Just like they'll say, they'd be froze, and, and of course, right now, you say they have plenty of money, but then what happens later on down the future?
Well, I mean, that's, it is what, at this point, you're under the gun, Jim.
Oh, I'm not, see, we also need to try to find out, what is our deadline for?
So it's already too late to do anything.
This year?
Freeze a tissue, because they're unable to get over that.
The only, and the reason for that is, I talked to Rick about it yesterday. The software company who implements the software, you know, there's only so many, well, they're already scheduled up for this year, so Henry County's not gonna be able to get on, and if, if we continue to wait, it's just pushing it that much for, far back, and we're not gonna be able to, you know?
Right.
If you wait till it goes to a vote, then you're waiting that much longer. I mean, I'm just throwing the.
I mean, there is a possibility that the legislature, they solved it by the time they get out of session, but I wouldn't bet on that either, so.
I would never wanna bet on legislators. Doing anything.
See.
Bet. I mean, you can talk to Rick, but I talked to him yesterday about it. He already said it's too late.
Okay.
But he would be, he's, he, he was, you know, for, well, even if we, if we pass it now, we start collecting applications already for next year so that it goes into effect. I mean, he's, it's, he's not saying, no, don't do anything. He's just saying it's too late to implement it this year.
Okay.
Where you would use twenty-four as the base. It's too late to do. Now, we could use twenty-five as the base.
So in order to use twenty-four as a base, we've actually got to get it in. We would've had to get it in for this year. I misunderstood. I thought we could set twenty-four, even if we was in twenty-six, but a base is a base, but that's kinda, there was a couple of things they talked about in one of the meetings we had, so that's why I was, I was curious.
Well, you know, I don't know how, but how far back he could go to do that.
I don't either.
That would be a real question.
Well, you can go like, the way I understood.
You go back as far as you want.
Yeah, you can go back as far as you want on that.
But they recommended using twenty-four as a base, kinda thing.
I guess if it depend, it would depend on when you pass it. I mean, how, how much?
Yeah, I don't.
You're gonna keep pushing it out?
That would be a good question to.
I mean, you got airline down. If we're gonna do that, we need to copy one of them, whatever we wanna do. Because we need, I'm not a ginder, believe me, but I just wanna make sure I, and, and if everybody's on agreement, if everybody's on agreement, you know, it should be work great.
Yeah.
That's.
I'm, I'm not familiar with that bill right now. Is that property tax?
Yes, what it was is.
It's real estate.
Real estate tax for seniors.
Right, which is supposed to be capped.
Yes.
Right.
It's capped at whatever year we put it at. And then.
You need to go back, because we're tired of getting these little notices that says you're gonna be reassessed. And you know, I, I showed up a couple of years ago.
But I think that doesn't have, does that have something to do with, that you don't have to worry about being reassessed again?
Yeah, but it, he's already, what he's saying, and correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm saying I've been reassessed over and over, over and over, and those in the county, several of them, have not. And I presented a list of the properties of those high-dollar homes that never got reassessed for years.
That's been.
And now I got another card the other day that says fifteen percent plus. I've been putting off going down and yelling at Scott, but, you know?
It's all landowners. I got one of those cards too, Gary.
Yeah. And when it says lost.
That's right.
My God, you said it, what?
I haven't got one yet.
Well, we got, I got.
Then again, I don't get to mail every day, so.
I got one.
Sometimes my kids run down.
You can talk to them if, which.
And the only thing that it caps is your place of residence. So if you own.
No, it's just my residence.
It would be only on your residence.
Right.
Yeah, it's just your house. It's not land. See, that's the big thing. It's not land, because land's what's gonna take height.
I'm not a landowner, Mike.
Well, I don't have much land as a lot of, I mean, I got a few acres, but nothing like a farmer.
But there, there's some confusion.
Like Jake and all of them, they have many acres.
There's some confusion that.
Twenty now.
Personal property versus real estate versus. Personal property versus real estate versus one, you know, your residence, where you own, say you're a landlord and you have four houses plus your house, well, it's only gonna be on your residence, not on all of your property. There's just a lot of confusion around it.
Like I said, I'm just getting tired of getting those cards and not everybody's getting them.
Yeah, I now I've got, I got one the other day, but it's on the, but on the same dents, it says call if you wanna have them do it in, in, or through the house, which that's fine. I may do that anyway. Cause I think maybe at one time I had to finish basement when all the kids was, now taking all that out, went back to basement. So I need to do with the residential part down there. But anyway, I don't know. And I don't know the answer to this other, other than we can do it. It'd be up to we should do it. If they wanna do it, we can, we can jump in it.
Well, I, I would like to meet with schools first. On the phone or something.
I definitely wanna get.
Wait for Mark to be back and.
It'd be good to get a time, maybe the schools could come in with the business with it, but.
That's what Jake's wanting to do. Do you just want the schools?
And I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Schools gonna want all they can get.
Yeah, they, they, they won't be happy, but I mean, there's a lot to not out of our hands when it gets to that point, you know?
Well, that's the lion's share on the property tax statement anyway, back from the rest of the school, like ten times over.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
Schools would really be the only ones I think we necessarily have to talk with.
Right, because as, as we're said, that's, they're the.
Yeah. Once you get it out like that, you haven't talked to the townships. They still, you're gonna have a bunch of them squawking. Because they're, you want to, you wanna let them know what you're talking about.
Well, I definitely let them know, yes.
You wanna cover, uh, Mark's saying, no, if you haven't voted on by the public, then we're out. And that is one way of letting, as far as I'm sure, that I'm not for sure. Mark's right there. Cause then the people would have to say so or what they wanna do. And don't know. The same.
What's the?
I mean, like I said, that's something we never could come up with, and I've sat through the same as them and as others, and I've never come up with the right answers.
Well, Rick went to collector training last week and he said, the majority of the state is on board.
Okay, and that's, they're gonna do it? Okay, if we're gonna, if we're doing it at Tattaway, that'd be fun.
I think we're gonna be to the point where we'll have to do it that way.
If you keep pushing it off and pushing it off, it's just not, I mean, you gotta do something.
Yeah. Someone did suggest wait until after legislation is, is out of session to hear what they gotta say and then.
Well, the way I understand it, we can, we can do it and use twenty-five as our base year.
Well, that's what we were just talking about, how far back, if, when you passed it, I think that would have to be specified. You could go back.
Go back to twenty-three, I don't care.
Jake was saying they suggested using twenty-four.
That's what they suggested, but I would wanna definitely find out to make sure.
I think that's a conversation you need to have with Rick.
With Rick, okay. I'll talk.
Well, Rick and Scott probably, he, he does. Cause don't they have to both have, be involved in that?
I'm sorry?
Said, I thought, I thought it'd already been froze.
Not here. Like Benton County, they, they've adopted it. Cass and St. Clair.
State law that allows each county to decide whether or not to.
We call Rick and see if he's.
Yeah.
Oh.
But there's still changing things.
Yeah.
My taxes went down in twenty twenty-five and so I'm like.
I'm sorry?
I said, my taxes actually went down in twenty twenty-five.
Rick's gonna come up? So maybe he's gonna answer your question.
Yeah, it'd be good. But yeah, it's a there's a lot of people that would really like to, uh, enjoy the benefit of this.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm all for it.
And I'm getting all kinds of phone call. I mean, it's, it's, I'm getting calls, Rick's getting calls.
School taxes went up this year.
Probably, didn't everything go up?
School taxes? Did it go up this year?
I don't know, I'd have to.
I guess I. All I know is I paid about a couple hundred dollars more than I did the year before.
They don't set their tax levy until August, September. But didn't they pass a new tax or something for the, wasn't there?
They just continued that.
Oh, it was continued?
It was continued or discontinued?
Continued.
Continued, thank you.
Well, I reckon.
So are we allowed to use twenty-four as a base instead of twenty-five, even if?
At this point, software people are saying it's too late to do that.
Okay, for a base?
To, to set twenty-four as a base.
Okay.
Because of the fact that, um, he has got so many other counties right now that he's working on. And he can't get us done in time to do that.
Even if we get put on the list?
He's, he's got fourteen counties and he's, he's starting, or has started this year with twenty-four as a base.
I'm trying to remember who, I think it was Travis Elliott suggested even in, in twenty-five, use twenty-four as a base. But he made got his streams crossed too. I didn't know.
I think there's a pretty good mix of counties doing both setting twenty-five as a base and twenty-four as a base. Um, as far as, you know, if you're going to try to set twenty-four as the base, when's the cutoff gonna be to apply for that?
Right.
Cause if it's June, that's a month and a week away.
Yeah, we'll build that.
Well, I thought you could have the base one year and then when it comes to apply and everything, whatever year that is.
Well, we're gonna freeze twenty-four.
Yep.
So that means that, um, those that are paying taxes this year wouldn't pay any more than they paid in twenty-four. And at this point, at this point, the software company cannot make it that. Cause we waited too long.
Okay.
But for doing the software, if they're just freezing it, I, I'm having trouble with not picking a year because all that should be all digital anyway.
He's not, he's saying you can't just choose a year to go back to, is what Rick's, you can't.
That's not what I.
Well, that's why I'm saying Travis may not have understood completely, cause he may not have seen the software or talked to the software people. I mean, the software people's gonna know whether or not they can go back or not.
Cause I'm in a computer.
He said it takes about twenty hours or two hundred hours to get the software updated for each county.
Two hundred hours? What's the cost?
He said it's about two, twenty thousand dollars to upgrade the, the software to do that.
To do it.
That's an estimate.
Yeah.
So with your deal that you, uh, set in on, they said freeze all the taxing entities, right?
I think most counties are freezing all of them.
Which, uh?
Take one example, um, Christian County, which is Ozark, Nixie area.
Okay.
Um, pretty good size of population. They froze twenty-three. Uh, one of the first counties in the state to do it. And then twenty-four, so twenty-four's taxes were based on freezing twenty-three. And the total savings for all the seniors that applied was fifteen hundred dollars total.
Really?
For everybody that applied, that's all.
Plus twenty thousand and do it.
He himself, he's, he's over sixty-two. He said that he saved six dollars on his taxes.
Well, that's what we looked before.
Lose on twenty-three, twenty-four, dollar sixty-four.
Cause you're only doing the residence, the home.
Yeah, just the home is all in.
You're not even looking at a big, big factor, figure.
He said in time, I, but for the first year.
When you, when, when you say the home, it's literally.
Good morning, David.
Hello, hello?
The house. So if you have a garage next to it.
Um, everybody's doing that different too. Is, is your residence include the shed and your detached garage? Some do something else. Benton County is cutting all the other little buildings out, so it's only the house.
But if the garage is actually attached to the house.
Then, I don't know.
Okay.
To interpretation, I don't know if I set up the ordinance.
Cause if, if that, if that's the case, I, I talked to Scott about this, and he's gotta go out and cut out all of the little houses away from your sheds and your buildings. I mean, that's gonna take some time to, for on his side of the because he's gotta have that information to give to you is the way I understand it.
Well, actually, the way, um, I visited with the software guys, it's Ulrich is the name of the company. Um, he said the assessor's the one that goes on the system and check marks, take this property is frozen. This is not, this parcel is, this is not. So a lot of it is on the assessor, and he, and Scott doesn't think it is. The collector's side, we are just charged to collect the taxes
Right.
based on the assessment and the, the letters.
But the house, when you go to separating the house from everything, just like the buildings, and I understand that.
But Scott has already, um, like, like if you have a hundred acre farm, Scott has already set five acres as the residence and the ninety-five is the ag. But if, if your ordinance is to separate it even more, then that's just more checkmarks that he's gotta make on us.
Well, some places be, or residents be more than five acres.
Yeah.
When you look at it, if you got buildings around it, if you do one, you gotta do them all. Okay.
So we were saying, do you, do you do them all? If you only do the house?
Yeah, I mean, if you're gonna put it out, it's all with the house, it has to be the house.
I think the biggest year as far as applications goes would be the first year. We're gonna be catching up everybody that's already sixty-two and over.
They'll slow down.
And I recommend that you freeze twenty-five and you can already start application process now and it would end in June of next year. That would give us twelve months to get everybody, you know, on the books and the software, learn how to figure it out and run tests and make sure.
And you say application process, what's that?
Well, everybody has to apply.
Yeah.
So they come in here to apply?
Yeah.
Or is that an online deal?
Uh, they.
It's gonna be hard to.
They have to prove, provide proof that they're sixty-two or over, provide proof that they live in the house that they own.
Yeah.
Provide proof that they, they do own it. Their name needs to be on the deed.
Okay.
Just some, some assurances that we need.
Yeah, definitely. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead, Gary.
Well, then, if it's twenty-five you're going with, these little cards that we got, you increase it by fifteen percent. So it's a fifteen percent on top of my taxes that I'm paying now. So if you'd have frozen it at twenty-four. Right. My assessment. If you'd frozen it at twenty-four, I may not be assessed fifteen percent more.
You'll still be assessed the fifteen percent, but your taxes will freeze. Your assessment isn't gonna change. Your, your assessment's gonna.
I say because it's gonna have to keep up with just in case.
So you're gonna, you're, you're gonna be leaving the tax part of it at the same rate. Go twenty-five?
It's not a, Gary. It's not a big safety. I hate saying.
Then you have to reapply every year.
Fix that nonsense.
You still have to reapply every year because, you know, the county doesn't know if
Okay.
the eligible sixty-two or over persons pass and move out.
Uh, we need to get Scott and all of them sent out, get that figured out, what we're gonna do.
I do think we need to do it, get it done and
Okay.
so we can develop a.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Need to develop a, uh, application
Yep.
that is easier for sixty-two and over to
Yep.
to get the information that they need. I think simple driver licenses, proof of their age.
Yeah.
Would it be more savings if it included the house and say five acres?
Oh, yeah, the buildings.
I mean, and that's up to Scott if that's how he wants to assess.
Some buildings are worth our ordinance.
Our ordinance, what it says on how.
Decision on how.
I mean, I.
But you need to talk to Scott prior to making that decision.
Definitely, okay.
I can tell you a lot of people just like, look at your farming, it's got a hundred, two hundred building up there.
Right, yeah. Well, I was mainly just talking, instead of just being a house,
Yeah.
the residential land that's, the house is on too, is what I was thinking, but I don't know how that you s- differentiate kind of thing, so. So when you talk to Scott
Okay.
and Rick, kinda get us all together.
Yep. And then we better get schools involved too. After, well, first off, we gotta figure out what we're doing. Then you get schools involved, see what they think. Like I say, first, first item on the agenda is make sure we got, see what we're doing.
You'll probably have a mix from the schools because once you're trying to raise their levy and they fail to pull.
Yep.
So they, they may need the money, so they're gonna fight.
For it, that's right.
Fight the senior freeze. They make the fight. I mean, you don't, you're not gonna go against seniors, but it may be more difficult for them to operate.
Yeah, but you gotta look at your community. If all of them, a lot of them are retired, it's gonna change your tax. And then how do you vote on things? If you're voting on a school levy, hey, everybody's a senior, oh, vote for it. It's not going up.
Jake, Jake wanted to meet with the schools just to say, look, this is what we're doing, just to have an open line of communication. Not really asking them for permission because they don't need it, but just saying, we want you aware that this is what.
That way they're not surprised. And it seems like a good stir kinda thing.
There is chatter that there will be a lawsuit at some point in time, either from somebody that's not sixty-two because of discrimination that they don't get the tax freeze, so. But you're gonna have to be harmed first in order to bring up a lawsuit or something.
Right.
Schools could sue.
So that's what I was most concerned over with, the schools.
Anybody that's frozen.
Yeah. Once you're frozen.
But I mean, that's also the position that states put us in too.
Yeah.
But then, tell the S, once this happens, go up to the state and say, by gosh, are you gonna help me handle this? I can tell you what they'll tell you.
Here it is again?
Yeah, cheers. All right. Thank you, Rick. See you later. Okay. Sorry, David. We kinda got off on a short deal with you.
That's okay.
You know, for sixty seconds I sat there and I thought, why is the county clerk talking about property? And I was like, oh, yeah, that's right. Things have changed over here.
Yes, yes.
Well, I originally came here to talk about, uh, old glory days and, and I will.
Yep.
There's a little, we call this the main flyer. I think I brought this, this time last year. This is, it's not a hour by hour, minute by minute of, uh, of, of what goes on. That, that little folder will come out, uh, early to mid-June, once we get all of our sponsors. And, um, but this kinda gives you an idea of, of the dates, what's going on, um, just different things like that. And so I know that we're using your, uh, lush grounds. Who knows by, what the July weekend, what it might be, but you know, I just always like to, uh, come by and
Yeah.
and, uh, you know, if, if you say no, we're gonna have to do a lot of re- raising. But ask for the, the grounds to be used for old glory days about a week ahead of, maybe about two weeks ahead of time. You can't call them too early, but I'll call Dig Right.
Yeah.
And they always come, all, all the utilities come and mark everything and, and so we'll know that, you know, where everything underground is. And, um, uh, we really don't have anything different planned, if possible, and, and, uh, you know, probably be due to the, uh, the court system as you and I talk. We, we, we might want to put some rides on the parking lot, but then again, we kinda need the parking lot for the Elks, um, cornhole tournament. So, so you know, I, I, I just don't know. And, and the fo- the, uh, the, the third. is, uh, is Thursday, the fourth is Friday, so, you know, it would, um, I don't think we're gonna run into too many problems.
The only problem I've seen.
Court house is closed on Friday, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So on the Thursday, and that, and the main reason, check with the courts.
Yeah.
Cause Brandon and them, they have a jury trial or something, they're.
Yeah.
Lost it.
Yeah.
They gotta have everything.
Yeah, I know they.
They fill up the parking lot.
Yeah, yeah. And you have to have, you know, uh, law enforcement right here.
Well, then, now it seems like the jurors, they park out here. And that makes it better, so.
So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, we are planning.
Yep, yep.
The, uh, the entertainment this year. I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. That Phil Vandeleer will see on the inside page. He's, he does country cover, so we're getting our country crowd fixed. And then Old School Band is from Cleton, uh, Ronnie Shanks, uh, Tom Knott, some of those guys. They do a really good job, so they're gonna play right after the parade.
Oh, good.
Yeah, to kind of keep people from spread now to go and eat, although we want our, you know, businesses to, to share in, in the well. But, you know, we, we, we really want our vendors, so we're hoping that, that people will stay on the square, find something to eat from our vendors, sit and watch a, a local band. Surfing USA is, you know, Beach Boys tribute, and some of those same guys will turn around the next night and do vinyl revival. So we've got our country, um, old rock and roll, um, Beach Boys, and then sixty, seventy, eighty's covered as far as our, and then you, you can see everything else. The only other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, we're planning on doing an employer appreciation event hosted by the Chamber, and we'd like to do that on the courthouse lawn.
Will we be closed the next day?
It will be, uh, June twenty-fifth, um, from about five to six-thirty. Uh, we have a new committee at the, at the Chamber. It's still being formed, but we're trying to get juniors and seniors, well, maybe all high school kids, or we're trying to get juniors and seniors involved in because volunteers are going, you know, some of them are getting old and going away. And, and we're not getting a lot of youth into it, you know. We, we have a lot of old people carrying around benches and stuff like that during old glory days, so we're trying to get, uh, more young people involved, so uh, they, their, their first thing looks to be an employer appreciation event on June twenty-fifth. Uh, five to five-thirty will be a social, cornhole, washers, pickleball. Five-thirty to six, announcements and maybe a presentation. Six to six-thirty, and then eating. Uh, gonna have hot dogs as provided by Compass Health, uh, giveaways, and then lawn games, um, trying to think of.
That's gonna be June the twenty-fifth?
June twenty-fifth, yes. Um, you know, I, I, I don't really love the, the timing of it because of old glory days and, and us being so busy, but, uh, we can take one evening out and so, but anyway, it, it's, you know, and so we're gonna try to have kids involved, like I say. Uh, one will be an intern that if they perform like they should, they're gonna win a thousand dollar scholarship, um, for, for, uh, continuing education. And then we'll have other kids that can, uh, either through FBLA, uh, the other organizations that they need to give community hours. We're hoping that they can work with us. And we're also gonna try to work with, uh, Main Street to, uh, on, on that as well. And so, so anyway, so I just wanted to see if we could get approval for, we, I don't think we're gonna be hammering anything into the ground tables. Um, I don't think we even have a tent. Uh, hopefully it's not this weather here. Um, and that's all there is to that.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Did you find out anything?
Um, yeah. Third floor court is good. Judge Duff has a jury trial the first and second, but she doesn't show anything on the third.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I find out first and second.
We'll have to let you know.
As of right now.
Right now.
Yeah.
On the third, if we wanna put some stuff here, we can, uh, until we can't. And which, you know, the, the carnival, uh, I call it the circus.
Yeah.
Because, you know, having a carnival is kinda like having a circus, but they won't show up, you know, until early that week, and so, you know, they can have plans to use this out here, but if we say nope, it's gonna be used on July.
As long as they keep it locked up. Cause I hate to have them move them out there.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, I, I, I'm thinking that if, if we did, it'd probably be, you know, further away, so then we could have, or I, I just don't know right now. Because I know they like to have the cornhole next to the beer tent.
I know, I know what happens. That's right.
So.
And I understand all of the, the big thing.
Yeah.
We just gotta take care of business too.
Yeah, yeah. Working together.
Yep. So hopefully it'll work out.
Do we need a motion to? Or just a, okay, go forward kinda thing?
Yeah.
No, just, just.
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Was you gonna use the courthouse grounds on the twenty-fifth too? Is that what you were saying?
What's that?
On the twenty-fifth of June?
June, uh-huh.
I just wanna make sure I got that date right.
And that, you know, that might just be like maybe one section of the courthouse lawn. I can't, it'll probably all spread out. And, um, in, instead of Tuesday day, uh, porta toilet, porta potties, we had, we had folks bid on it, and I think we got a, uh, a low, well, we did, we got lower bids in the last few years, so. So you guys may not have to pay nearly as much for.
Porta potty.
For people to go to the bathroom on your lawn. In a porta potty.
Take the crap on us.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, David.
Yeah. David.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't matter.
Did you all bid on it? All right. Thanks, guys. What time's refreshments?
I, let me know.
Time's on.
Refreshments?
No. Gosh, gosh, gosh. Twenty-fifth. I don't think I.
I don't know. It was one word. This meeting's over.
Yep. Okay. There be anything else, Kelly?
No, David Lee was the only, only other person on the schedule. I haven't seen Dennis yet.
Good. Thanks for coming by.
Not having refreshments. That's why we're leaving.
Yeah, okay.
Square One Hundred and Nine has some pretty solid biscuits and gravy over there, so.
Yeah.
You should try it over there. They're fried. Get, I know they do chicken waffles with chicken tenders. Get fried chicken.
Hurting you.
Huh?
I was in a bit of trouble.
Oh, wow.
It's fine. I'm sure they use the courthouse on the, parking lot. None of it, if there's nothing scheduled. Of course, we'd have to wait for the closing time.
Yeah, see, that's.
We just.
You gotta remember.
Close the courthouse on the third too, couldn't we?
Too. Go for it, Commissioner Bradley. I'm glad that was live.
Yeah, I just thought of that.
You just think about it a little bit. How much money you've spent.
Well, me and her wouldn't know.
You realize how much money you've spent today. And just, yeah, getting into this, this chapter one hundred.
Yeah.
Probably oughta rethink that a little bit better.
Backtrack, backtrack.
We better wait till you get into the budget a little bit.
Let's rewind.
You gotta have income somewhere. We're not the.
Well, it was a good idea at the time.
It's not good. It's not, it's not nice. It was a great idea, it was a pretty. Honestly.
Say yes.
Honestly, there'll be a lot that won't be here that day.
That's not what I was thinking. I mean, I know I'd take that to vacation day or something.
Right, for the simple fact that it's a pain to get up here, it's, you know, and we're off on Friday, so there'll be a lot that aren't open.
Yeah.
So, or aren't here.
Yeah.
But it's a vacation day or, you know, it's, it's a, it's a vacation day situation at that point, but.
Mm-hmm. So individual decisive, or is it, uh?
It's individual office decided, yeah. So if I wanted to close my office on the third, I could close my office on the third.
Okay.
But then she has to.
Right.
Just like, damn, how you make it work with employees.
Understood.
Well, you did just have to be under the understanding that if we do this, we're taking a vacation day.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, it's that simple.
That's what I did.
I will close my office if you're planning on not being here anyway, you know, and you have to take a vacation day, and most of them are okay with that.
Yeah. What do they use? They have a vacation.
Yeah, some don't.
Nope. Some of them use it up.
Well, I will tell you from years of experience, old glory days up here on the square, um,
And.
we're, we're not getting things done anyways because.
It shuts down now.
People don't wanna come up here and do business because they can't find parking. They can't, you know.
Yeah.
It's just inconvenient, so.
With all the rides and everything up here, I can imagine.
It's usually pretty quiet anyways in the courthouse, unless they have court. Unless they have court, and then that would make a difference.
Thank you. Okay, yeah, that. It does make a difference. Never exactly been in here, here in old glory days, so I didn't know.
We do a lot of people watching.
I bet that's.
Yeah, it's terrible.
That's the trouble.
It's always worse. The bad thing is they shut you out. Okay.
The best part about it is you have lots of food to choose from that you normally wouldn't.
Yeah.
For lunch.
And you don't have to go far for it, huh?
You can have a funnel cake on lunch if you want one.
Yeah. Okay. Here's where I get. See, Kelly?
What, Jen?
I wanna see.
You gotta go under files.
I know, but I'm looking. All right, to get my teams down to the bottom.
Send anything about that.
See, it's started over here on this. Never mind. Get your other stuff done.
What do you?
See, I haven't got it over here at all.
What?
My team.
It's two, it's right there.
Oh, a taco. Binder than a bat, Kelly. Binder than a bat. God, I hate that, Kelly. Okay. I'm gonna get out, see what I got. Yep, I got it over there now. It's okay.
Are you going to make the phone call to that woman who asked please?
We can call now, or I was gonna call after the meeting, but we can do it now if you'd like.
It's completely, completely up to you. I just told her we would have, I would have her call when commissioners were.
Go ahead.
I didn't know if you wanted to call on that phone.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Yeah, yeah. That'd be good, dude. Good, good experience. That way. There we go.
Just dial the number first? You have to use a number to dial out?
Just dial it.
Just dial a number. You have to get there, you come. Not the one.
You don't have to dial one?
Yes, you do.
Oh, you do? There's where I screw up at.
Four seven seven.
That one?
Four seven.
That's a call. Three, three, oh, three. There we go.
Want to dial?
Yep, dial. There you go, it's on its finger.
Okay.
Yep. What are you talking about?
Uh?
You.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Yeah.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah, is Mary Kay Newman there?
Yeah, hang on.
Thank you, sir.
Hello?
Yeah, Mary Kay Newman, this is, uh, Jake Bradley, South Side Commissioner. We're in a meeting right now and had a note to give you a call.
Yes, I would, I'm very much appreciative of this.
Yeah.
Uh, I talked to our assessor last fall, uh, because a lot of my friends in the area were taking in their applications for having their, uh, property taxes, uh, frozen because they were older. And, uh, Benton, uh, I think, uh, Pettis, uh, they named off several of them that they had found out about, and so they filled out their applications and had to go by county. So I called our assessor and asked him, and he says, yeah, I've been asking them to do this and everything else. And he says that right now, they said, no, they're gonna wait for the election. When the new commissioners come in, if that's the case, which it has been. And I've been watching your, um, minutes from your meetings and everything, and there has been absolutely no mention of anything at all about freezing property tax values for seniors. I'm seventy-nine years old and stuck on retirement income, and every year our assessment goes up, and we can't really afford this. Uh, we shouldn't have to, and everybody else around the state, I mean, they're doing it more and more. I mean, let's face it, seniors are getting the, the, the rough end of everything lately. And are the last few years. And it would be appreciative if you guys would kinda see into making something happen in Henry County, cause you have an awful lot of, uh, senior citizens in this county.
Well, luckily enough, we talked about that today, and we are, uh, we're in favor for it. We're just trying to get all the information together to make it the best deal for us and our seniors at the same time.
Oh, that is fabulous news.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, yes. Yeah, just, uh, I noticed, uh, I gathered attention again when, uh, on my email, it said, okay, the, the assessment forms were due by end of Thursday. I thought, oh, I gotta go find out about this.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we are behind where we won't be able to, uh.
Freeze it for, it'd be free as frozen for.
Next year.
It'd be frozen for twenty-five.
For twenty-five.
But, but yes, we are, uh, like I said, we are getting everything together and hopefully here soon we can, uh, come to a decision on that.
Okay, well, it would be appreciated if you do.
You bet. We're on it.
Okay, thank you very much for the call.
Uh, you're welcome. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right. Well, there we have it.
Yeah?
See, uh.
Well, the big thing.
Get all the information together.
It's, it's, it's handy to have this here.
We just, we need a longer court.
Or run it behind.
We can run it underneath, can't we? Don't you guys have an open?
Yeah, but then we wanna bring it over here too.
We just yell out.
Is that a, what is that? It's.
It's got a box. It's got a box.
Oh.
If we just run it behind this stuff.
Okay. Well, we can leave that.
We can temporarily do this, and then I'll talk to Chuck about getting along.
Get along with the court.
Brainstorming out loud.
Yeah.
We had two phones up here at one point, and we never used the second phone.
You know, Kelly, if I had my battery charged up.
But it's kinda handy for me to be able to answer the phone.
Cause most generally, it's, it's most generally for the clerk. From downstairs.
Well, usually it's me and Chuck trying to figure out something to I O T.
Yes.
How did we get on the do not disturb button? Like, what do we get?
I didn't get nothing other than dial.
Jack down that.
It's on do not disturb.
I dial one first, that's why. Is, uh, Mark or Dennis gonna come up? Gonna be on make it today?
Let me find that.
Say if not.
Yeah. I hear ya. I'm with you, man. If they're not coming, I got something to do.
Yeah. My middle one decided to upchuck just before he got out of the house to go to school.
I had one, um, who caught some kind of virus last week in Larry and Jack, she completely lost her voice. Completely, couldn't, kid couldn't talk. She's better now, though.
Well, that's good.
Telephone number nine one three 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 five 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 six.
I don't think he's coming.
That doesn't sound like it.
Wonder where he's at?
Hey, Austin, it's Kelly from the county courthouse. Um, my phone is stuck on do not disturb in the area of the commissioner's office, how do I get rid of that? Something just got pushed. The mute. Right, okay, perfect, thank you.
Meet Benton on the right.
I didn't even know do not disturb was an option.
We must have it all the time, must have a storm, something.
Sounds like they're out there done, need to be done, so. I don't have anything else.
Well.
I have nothing but plenty of work to do.
Do you got any?
Nope. Can I entertain a motion?
Oh, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Well, second, motion being made to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, I'm scared.